If you need it.
I'll grab one and I don't open them back. Is there someone coming in Doug? I hear someone.
Sorry?
Good.
We'll call this meeting in order. Roll call please.
Hello, Emmer.
Here.
Max, Emmer.
Yes.
Neville.
Here.
Smug.
Here.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of guests, Randy, Jake, and I have a name written down here. Is it Landon?
Yes, sir.
You don't have a topic written down.
I didn't have a specific topic. I just remember last one here. There was something I wanted to say. I didn't know how this worked. I didn't have any.
Okay. There is a spot for public comments on the agenda items and then also a spot for public comments at the end for non-agenda items, so. Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Minutes and claims and accounts.
A E P Energy, two thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars eighty-four cents. Amarin, one thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars one cent. Blue Cross Blue Shield. Three thousand six hundred two dollars seventy-five cents. Casey's Business Mastermind, one thousand six hundred eighty dollars twenty cents. Conrady Construction, five hundred. I E P A, twenty-five hundred. I M B, four thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars ninety-seven cents. Lee Hanson. Six hundred fifty-nine dollars ten cents. Mount Pulaski Phoenix Fire Department, two thousand. Ron Stewart Mowing, five hundred fifteen. William Stewart, eight hundred. Sun Belt weren't told, two thousand two hundred forty-one dollars ninety-eight cents.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there any public comments on the agenda items? Moving on, officer reports. Tony?
Yes, I have like to talk about the house down south line, three twenty-one south line.
Okay.
I've got some information to pass out. To you guys. These are reports. There's also a post. Of. Of the reports of pre- uh, the previous chief. And I've got some information as well this week. The house has been condemned. Back in thirteen. And they had an inspection. And they had an re-inspection back to that time as well. And it never passed. There's some two major things. And it was mold. And a beam that was in the main, the main beam. It's in a house that's. Been not fixed. Since early this spring. Hushcraft has moved into it. And no one's supposed to be there. The problem is, is you know, like I said, it's condemned. It's never been. I mean, it's supposed to be re-inspected. It's never gotten re-inspected. Because you know, it never did get, the things never did get corrected.
And to be clear, it's up to the, the owner of the property to request the re-inspection when all the problems have been fixed.
Yes. Or you guys, the council can also. You know. Have it re-inspected. So we can get this. And if it, if it passes, it shouldn't be a problem. But the problem is, it's never passed. And it's a safety issue. I mean, it's. So I think it's something that needs to be addressed. I, I put in that packet, the reports, the letter from the previous council back in thirteen. There's also. Some things I saw in the ordinances were, there's several violations. Which I was going to. And you've got that as well in the dangerous building section and the rental inspection. It's something we've got to get cleared up because. Man, I just, we just can't have it get there.
You're telling us.
And I intend to. Yeah, there's another part where Mr. Pope had planned on taking those off of rental. That was back in this February this year. He took it off of rental. But the problem is, he's allowed you to move in. And it's condemned. It can't be. Nobody should be in there. So. I do plan to write a letter to vacate. And you know, a reasonable time.
That's all we have because we.
Right, I understand.
Tom's not cooperating.
And he's.
I've tried calling Conrady and I can't get Conrady in there without Tom saying he needs to come in there. And I think Conrady needs to come in because I do know that they redid the end of, the inside of it. I do know that they built the beam in the basement and everything like that. But until it's inspected, nobody else knows that.
Right.
So I'm in the same boat you guys are. We didn't even know the house was condemned. You know, so it's, it was unfair to us because we honestly didn't know anything about it yet.
And that's what makes me so mad. I mean, Tom has known this since thirteen. And he's basically went right to our, you know, our ordinances and just totally ignored us. And I said, I see some violations here that I, I would like to or I'm going to. Suggest some things and impose a fine. Because I mean, it just, it just, it feels like a slap in the face to the city and the police department. Like she said, she didn't know. He knew. And he allowed them to move into it. So. That's what's going on with that address there. I know he's got many other addresses we've had difficulties with before in the past. But now that someone's living in this one, this was definitely something we need to get addressed and get it corrected.
Has. And I think initially Tom had said that, or insinuated that it had sold and that's why people are moving in.
Right.
At, like. That's kind of a gray area. I mean, if it's owned by somebody, they can move regardless.
And that's, that's something, go ahead, sorry.
I think if any, if it, if any rent has been paid, like, that's. Straight up like finable.
Well, the other thing, I, I spoke with, Greg and I spoke with Tom Wednesday. We gave him a letter. Explaining, hey, you allow these people to move in here. You said they were buying it. Well, it's all still in your name. I said, the city of Pulaski does not have any proof that this is their house. It's still in your, in your name. You know, so I said, if it's truly sold, then we need some proof saying it's their house. We don't have anything. It's still in his name. Same with the, you know, the inspection, you know, if it's truly okay for them to live in, it needs to be inspected. And we have to have, we as a city, need that documentation saying, hey, thumbs up, it's good to go.
Without looking, what is the ordinance says for a recourse when this violation occurs? Subject to the general penalty. Up to, up to seven hundred fifty dollars until the nuisance is evaded.
Per day?
Mid May, number one fifty, max seven fifty.
Right. But like I said, I, I looked and I've got it in a report that I handed out. You know, um. You know, the dangerous building, you know, there's the part that. Talks about causing aid to spread disease or injury to health and occupants. Well, with the beam, the main beam being, you know. Unsupported, that to me is serious. I haven't physically seen it myself, but previous.
Well, we got it. So many pages of evidence here.
Right.
So to me, it seems that's what the ordinance provide, move forward with that. Enforce the ordinance as it's written.
There's another spot in there. I think he was supposed to notify the city inspector over, you know, if anybody was going to move in. I spoke with Greg earlier. He said, I had no knowledge until, you know, later. But Tom never notified him to say, hey. I'm going to have somebody move in now. So I, I've seen plenty of things in here. I think I probably highlighted it. You know, that place, that's just in the dangerous building. And there's the rental inspection part of it. So there's other things.
Well, it doesn't matter what angle you go, he's not in compliance.
Is there anything needed from the council as far as direction or? Is this purely informational?
Get it inspected, if we need it inspected. So we can decide, you know, if it's truly safe or not.
I'm not sure where we're at on getting it inspected. If we have to have him ins- initiate the inspection, because I don't know where this is at from back in fifteen. We tried to initiate an inspection and he wrote a letter and said, I'm selling these three properties. So then we couldn't inspect them. Well, then as soon as he lets somebody move in, I would like to just call my inspector guy and send him a letter and say, we're going to come down and inspect it. And let him make the call. I think that's what I would like to do. Rather than try to figure out who's on first and.
Right.
Because he, because he broke, you know, he, you know, he, just like Tim said, he's been not in compliance, so.
And he was, and he's not in compliance until it's re-inspected.
Right.
And we know, when we know we're.
So that's, I'm sorry, I'm late. What I'm, I'm going to do is I'm going to, and I talked to Paul about this. I'll come up tomorrow. I'll have her write a letter. And send it to him and send it to our inspector and tell him that we'd like that inspected and then we can follow up with you on that.
How much time do you give them? Two weeks, a week to allow the inspection before moving forward?
I remember reading here, I think it was like five days.
Five days.
Five days? Okay.
Hundred and twenty hours or.
If you guys let me know when, I'll let you in. I don't care. I'm at the point where I'm ready to be done with it.
Are you, are you still living in it now or?
Trying to like figure out what the hell we're doing. It, it put us in such a bind, you know, I just basically. Got out of the house I was in, shut off the electricity in the old house and everything else. And I did not know anything about any of this.
Neither we.
So, you know, it needs to, we need time to, you know, at least find a different place or I don't even know why Tom's dragging his feet, damn inspector in there. The inspector says it's not good, then I just want it situated, so we.
Well, you guys have said that you had fixed everything that was wrong before, so.
That's why I don't understand why.
I get an inspector down there and that's okay, then you can stay there. I mean, that's simple.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I told Tom, I don't care. I even left my keys with my dad that day. I was like, damn, if they want to go in there, here's the keys. I don't care. But apparently it had to be up to Tom. But I, I'm at the point where.
I'm writing a letter and telling him we want it inspected.
As far as it being up to Tom, I, I think the ordinance clearly states like, there's other people, the residents of the house can also request an inspection.
Yes, they can.
So we can request that? That's what we're here for.
So you'd like to have it inspected?
Yeah, I wanted it inspected last week when all this stuff came up. Ask Tony. I was.
Oh, yeah.
I was. I mean.
The whole mutual agreement with him was that when her credit got to the point where we could have a first-time homeowner's loan, we would maybe be interested in buying it until further notice. We were renting it. Six hundred dollars a month. And we've paid three months so far.
And he didn't tell us anything about the rent. I mean, we didn't even move in until last week.
There's little paper signing with him, you know.
Yeah.
He, he should have known he couldn't do that.
But he did though.
Well, he's trying to evidently go through a loophole to save his own cheeks, so I mean.
But that's why we're up here tonight, because we just want the situation so we know where we need to go and what we need to do.
The letter will go out tomorrow.
Yep, four, four six one. C. It speaks about frequency access and notice of inspection. You know, it talks about how it's supposed to be done every five years. And then it says inspections may occur more frequently provided there is. Be a complaint lodged by the residents of the rental dwelling to be inspected.
Right. That's what I'll sign rather than.
That'd be fine.
Right.
As long as you can let us know the date.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a puppy that I keep in the basement while we're at work. That way he can look at the beam and stuff. I just want to make sure he's putting his kennel on, nothing happens like that.
You still have to notify him or is their request enough for you to?
Well, I think that hit their request is.
I believe it's enough.
Just keep it a day. So we know what day it is.
Yeah, because you're not going to hear any complaints from us.
Wouldn't be ready now.
This situation's been so frustrating.
If they've requested it of us, I'm not sure that he needs a letter. That's what you're saying. I don't know that Tom needs a letter.
I think the letter would be a good idea. It'd be a formal document request from the tenant. Wouldn't you think that would make sense?
Yes.
Nothing else is in writing that way.
You can handwrite something tonight and get it sent me below. Say that we were requesting that the house that we're renting is re-inspected. That's all it takes and.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see where we're, where we're going wrong on this by doing it. At, at, at their request.
Okay, so then we'll just, at their request. I'll have the, do I have to look? I, I have to look at the book. I don't know if I have to notify him because he's the owner.
I think.
Yeah, alright, so.
Notice shall be given to the. Notice shall be given to the owner, the owner's agent, and the occupant of the rental dwelling at least one hundred and twenty hours in advance.
Twenty hours, twenty-four, twenty-five days? Five days? Five days.
He gave him notice last few months ago, so.
I'll get it figured out tomorrow. We'll, we'll make sure that, I mean, Tommy's got a lot of this highlighted. We're going to go by the code. If they just handwrite something tonight, I'll get the letter written tomorrow. I'll get my guy scheduled and we'll move forward with it.
It sounds like he blatantly lied. He's already made sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars off of this. I hope there's. Financial repercussions to it.
Well, intent to sell is a pretty fraud. Intent to sell in a year when you have a loan maybe of like.
We legally looked up some stuff anyway because he did know the house was condemned and he still rented it out without our knowledge. Any money that we did give him, I mean, he's supposed to technically legally give us back, but do you really see us getting money back from Tom?
Did you get a receipt?
So. But I'll take the fines he gets, you know.
No, the fines won't go against you though.
No, I'm just saying, any fines he gets, I'm okay with that.
Right.
That works for me right now.
And we'll leave that up to Tony and Greg to decide, you know, the number on.
Like I said, I have a little more and make sure I see them. Like I said, I looked through the last two, the dangerous building and the rental part. And I thought, I saw several things in there, you know, if we can go through and just kind of.
So you just have something written from me tonight stating that I get the fines?
If you could, that'd be great.
That's fine.
Yep. And we'll find out what the city can legally do and, and.
Four six one, wherever you are, because we can inspect it without.
But I'm talking about.
We have to give, we have to give him notice and then we, you know, he has to let us in. They have to let us in, so. Any further discussion on this matter? Anything to add?
Nope, sir.
Okay. Anything else of your report, Tony? Is that all you had?
That's all I have, yes.
Okay.
Is that all we got to do from us? I can write that if.
Yes, that'd be fine. Greg can go with you and help in.
Thank you.
Yep. You too. Thanks for coming. Public Works?
Couple things. First thing, our six-inch water main to hair and fertilizer is completed. With the exception of the lab testing clearing and establishing an operating permit from the EPA. It's been flushed. Everything's good. So we're good to go there. Hopefully that'll be. Depending on how quick I get lab testing to pass and how quickly EPA works, I would like to shoot for a week. Let's hope for that. Uh, the other thing I have is between Josh and I, we're starting to put together our prioritization for our M F T program for the year. And really would like to have a report back to you by the next council meeting of what our recommendations are to move forward with that program.
Have that, have we gotten that back from the state yet? They approved it?
I believe we got the approval back as far as we can spend the funds.
Okay.
For just a matter of prioritizing where we want to put it. Other than that, that's pretty much, well, what I, well, I do have a very minor update from Justin Reese with Florence Work. And that minor update is, haven't heard anything out of C N yet, so, for finishing up of our force main project. Although he is fairly confident, myself is included, if with the plans that we set forth, pretty confident that we should be able to with that. So, that's what I have.
Anyone have anything else from Matt?
Since this is kind of in public works, do you want to talk about that now or?
Is that something as far as the trip, the presentation?
It's up to you.
Before we get to that, I would like to discuss, so we have Dinger working part-time.
Yes.
Do we want to continue that? Do we want to think about another full-time? And I don't know that we need to make a decision now, but I just want to get it on people's radar.
I'm okay with another full-time worker. I mean, every, seems like every time you've gone to just the three of you, Matt, about a couple of months goes by and you want to get a fourth one, so.
Well, that's driven by the influx of things we get done with the fourth man.
Right.
You know, we, I could move people around a little better and we would just get more done. I mean, it's no easier way to say it. We get more ground pushed.
Right.
Another thing that we, we discussed in the past is instead of going to fourth full-timer, just like increase our temporary help or maybe having two part-timers, you know, in the very peak. Summer and the peak snow, you know, parts. I don't know if it makes sense or not, but.
Says in the personnel policy that the Polish work director has the, you know, the full. Capability to hire and fire, if you will. I don't know if it necessarily needs, I don't necessarily if the, the person needs approved by us, but I don't, I. I don't know if the hiring of another person probably would, and then you would choose who.
Well, what I would like to do is start the process. In other words, thank you for mentioning it, Andrew. Start the process of advertising for applications, obviously. Go through the interview process and basically have the permission to, to move forward with it. Once we get to that point, I mean, we got to start somewhere. And I think now's a better time than not to revisit that or visit it.
That'd be fine.
I'm in favor of that approach. I don't think there's any shortage of work or things to do.
No, there's not.
Uh, any time of the year from my observations, so.
Okay.
Sure. So Bates Road, again, is kind of a two-fold issue, right? North of the railroad tracks, we would need to, let me back up. What I'm going to present to you here in the next couple of minutes is sort of a broad strokes, bullet points of what needs to happen and what sort of order. For the city to formally adopt Bates Road and kind of put this issue to bed, right? It's my understanding that the city wants to adopt ownership and maintenance of the road. So north of the railroad tracks, again, that triangle. Parcel up against one twenty-one, all that we would need is a written dedication and an ordinance adopt, accepting adoption of the road, right? That's going to need to come from the property owner. That's pretty straightforward. If the property owner agrees, we can, we, I can draft that, file it with the clerk. The city then has possession and needs to maintain Bates Road north of the railroad tracks. South of the railroad tracks is a two-part function. I think the easiest way to do this is if we have the property owner agree, hey, I want to be annexed. All they have to, the property owner has to do is file a written petition with the clerk certifying that they want to become part of the city of Mount Pulaski. I drafted, I drafted up a sample petition. All they have to do is sign it under oath and we can take care of that. And then that goes to the city at council for approval of a majority. There's no notice provision, there's no court intervention. As long as the two parties agree, I want my property to become part of the city of Mount Pulaski. It's just up to the city council to approve it. There are some notice requirements that go to a library taxing district, a fire protection district. I don't know if it's subject to a drainage district, but some of those special districts need to be notified. We can take care of that. That's on our end. There is also, you know, again, taking care of the tax issue. That's sort of beyond the purview of what an annexation agreement does. That's up to the property owner's consideration, I guess. I don't, I, I haven't looked into that aspect of it. I assume their taxes would go up, but I don't know for sure.
Darren, Darren, which is, I talked to him about it a couple of weeks ago and he thought that our, that the denominator for the city was like eight point three and your denominator now was like seven point three. But at the same time, Tim, you know a lot about taxes and you believe that they will not go up. The assessed value is the assessed value.
So. It would be nominal in the big picture.
Yeah, assessed value wouldn't change, but the multiplier would.
Multiplier, yeah, I said a nominee, multiplier.
And again, if you're, you're the landowner, right? So you're already probably paying into the school district. You're already paying into the city for some city support services, library, fire protection, things like that. Parks. So again, you're already a part of those things. I, again, I haven't crunched the numbers, but I can't imagine it would be. That much of a difference. And again, when we do the, part of the annexation agreement will include a dedication of the road to the city. So you're gaining the benefit of the city maintaining. Maintaining the road.
Yeah, I just, I looked at different information. Some of the information said that three hundred dollars a year per hundred thousand dollars assessed value and that is part of the stuff that I had read up on, whether that doesn't necessarily apply to the.
That might be a better question for, you know, the tax assessor's office.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just, I'd like to have that, you know, we talked about talking to the assessor just to make sure, you know, I know ahead of time getting into this exactly what I'm getting into instead of my, seeing my taxes go up, you know. Five hundred dollars or better, you know, end of the year. So I don't mean to be petty about it, but it does mean something at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, there's, there's no, no wrong, you know, avenue with, if you need to have the information, you need to have the.
And I thought we, uh, discussed if I didn't want to annex my whole property, just annex a strip of the land that the lane was on. Is that not an option anymore?
I don't think that's an option because this, the, the rest of your property would still reside outside of, and then you'd have to split the road into a separate parcel. And then dedicate that parcel to the city. I mean, I guess potentially that, that might be an option. I just.
That was one of the options that was put to me before. That's the only reason I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because I'd asked if, if I didn't want to, you know, annex my whole property, if, if that would nix this deal and that said, though, it would be a possibility, just do the, the part that the lane sets on.
So you're just, just considering the road is what you really want to do?
I'm more comfortable with that right now. I've had a bigger, bigger picture and absolute guarantee on what my taxes are going to do going forward. And I'd be a little bit more comfortable about it. But, I mean, I'm just being honest with you.
How many acres is your property right now?
Eleven. I think it's like ten point eight, ten point nine, something like that.
Oh, yeah, ten point seven, okay. Can we talk with the tax assessor's office and get some, try to get some of that information for you?
Yeah, that's fine. And I thought that was going to be done previous to this meeting, so that's, that's fine. That was my intent.
I, I apologize if that's something you want to do.
I don't want to waste you guys' time. No, that's fine. I just don't want to waste you guys' time. Put everything out on the table, get everybody on the same page, just know exactly what we're getting into and, and, and come to common ground, so. I don't want to, you know, keep doing this and keep debating and looking for information. I just want to get.
Right.
Come to common ground, make everybody happy and be done with it.
Well, I think then. Call the tax assessor's office, see if we can get that information. And if that makes a substantial difference for you, such that you wouldn't be willing to. And if that makes a substantial difference for you, such that you wouldn't be willing to, then I guess we would consider maybe try to divvy up the parcel, but.
Divvy up, yes. Okay.
I, is there a rule that you can't divvy township property up less than one acre?
I thought it was five acres.
Five? There's some like number, right?
That I couldn't answer, and I'm.
And that's the only.
Had to do with, uh, like housing divisions, wasn't it, with five acres?
Yeah, five acres to build that.
Yeah, yeah. That may, that sticks in my mind too, but I don't know.
Well, that's something that I can look at too, I guess.
Well, I don't mean to drag this out any longer than it's already been dragged out, I just wanna know what I'm getting into, get all the packs ahead of me, I think that's fair.
As far as the part north of the railroad tracks and dedicating that, is the land over there?
They would probably be contacted by letter.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, don't, it's held in trust, so.
Does the railroad affect this?
You know, that's a good question, Tim.
Because is that a truly a railroad crossing in the true sense?
You know, I, and that's something.
They recognize that as a crossing.
Is there a warning sign?
Is that a number?
No, uh-uh. There used to be signs, but there's not anymore.
Most railroad crossings have an actual designated number.
Yeah, I don't know if it's got a number, I know the railroad guys address it as Horns Crossing, and there's, there, there are contact signs and everything else, it's been, you know, they recognize it as a crossing, I don't know what number it's given or anything else, that's, I mean, either shift changed or, I mean, they're, they just had a guy, you know, have a heart attack out there, and they just went out, and that's, they gave a dedicated crossing, and that's where they told him to go.
Right. I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know how much that would affect us, because, I mean, we're not gonna maintain the crossing anyways.
Right.
We would only be maintaining the road.
Yeah, you would never maintain, have to maintain the crossing, so.
Well, any, yeah, any other questions, like, does anybody, is that, that's where we're at?
We probably pretty much need to get the landowners north to get on board, otherwise, it doesn't even pay to talk to me. So, I mean, get all your backs straight, get all the information for the assessor, we'll get on the same page, meet on that, make sure you have the north end tied down, and then we can.
If we can get a hold of those people, but yeah.
Right, cuz I mean, without that, if you're not gonna go out, go ahead without him, then, uh, you know, but yeah, we just get all the information where I have a clear picture of what I'm looking at, I don't have a problem making it soon, but.
So really, it's gonna come down for you, price for taxes for the whole. Okay.
Yeah, when we talked about zone agricultural, residential, I mean, you know.
What is, what is the area here zoned now?
Pretty sure it's residential agriculture.
Are you okay with that zoning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, yeah, if you ever had livestock or anything else out there, you know, you'd be all right, but.
How many chickens do you have?
I have chickens and all. But the neighbors do have horses, I know they had to come to the city and talk to the city, cuz they are in city limits. So, yeah, you have to think about some stuff like that, I don't have anything out there at all right now, but in the future, who knows?
Do we, okay, do we know where we're moving forward then? Talk to the assessor and concentrate on trying to get hold of the property, the property owner north.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
So if this all happens, am I gonna be able to drive a semi on that road?
That's another, that's another good question to discuss. I don't know, what's the council think, what's, I think I'm, I'm.
I think the city ordinance allows for, again, we looked at this when we were doing the wind farm stuff, the city ordinance allows for trucks to be driven in city limits for people that live in city limits.
Yes.
To allow for something like this, I don't think that ordinance contemplated the trucks being fully loaded on a gravel road, but.
Right.
No, like a delivery-only type provision, if I'm thinking straight.
I, I think it was for residents, but I could be mistaken.
Oh, okay, right, I see where you're going now, so, no, I say no, because that's a slippery slope.
Well, then I don't, I mean, if that's the case, then I don't think you're gonna have an agreement.
He's not the property owner.
No, he is not.
No, but if he's under contract for deed, he's gonna be, somebody that needs to sign off on it too.
Yeah.
So.
I couldn't remember what we settled, cuz we had talked about that before, I can remember what we settled on last time, cuz I remember you saying there was a provision for someone.
Doing it.
Right.
He, he's looking to get out of that place anyway, so, I mean, he's.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, he wants to sell, he, he's supposedly trying to sell it now, he, he wants out from underneath it, so, I mean, trucks may not be there much longer, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, might not be an issue.
He told me here while that guy was on, that he put a maintenance shop out there, and I don't know what's going on with that, and honestly, I know he's been wanting out of it for the last couple years.
Does the city have weight limits on other roads right now?
I don't know, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to look, I, I don't remember seeing.
I'm not aware of any, cuz again, we've looked at this for the wind.
I'm not aware of any either.
Well, Tony would know, cuz he was looking at that stuff last year, for the wind farm track.
Yeah.
We occasionally have overloaded semis going down Vine Street, so they don't have to go into the underpass, I don't know.
They're not supposed to, though, I mean, there's, there's.
Next time I'll park in front of them.
There's no semis allowed on Vine Street except for local delivery, there's a sign that says it, council made that decision years ago.
The council needs to talk to IDO, I guess that's where they route them.
The other day I saw two sprayers going down, one of them about clipped a power line, gosh.
Okay, I think, I think we know where we're at with it, correct? Any other further discussion on this?
Filling the potholes in the meantime, can we just put some gravel in?
That's entirely up to you guys.
I thought the Streets Analysis Committee was supposed to speak about that.
Yeah, we have our meeting coming up.
Okay.
Right.
Yep. Would you?
You said Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
Yeah.
I thought there was discussion the last time that they were gonna start doing that.
I thought there was extra. It's not in the minutes, so we can't. All right. Okay.
Treasurers' report?
Our deposit's thirty-three thousand, eight, twenty-eight, ninety-six, looks like we got a couple, um, deposits from the tax collector. And the only other thing that I just want to mention, uh, we haven't gotten May financials yet. I reached out to Paula this morning, cuz they usually send them to her, and she stated that the reason that we don't have them yet is because there were some changes that they needed to make prior months with wrong account numbers, I'm assuming where they posted the payments or whatever, so that's why we haven't gotten them yet.
Okay. Quick question, um, the four loads of sand for eighty dollars, why was that, why is that deposit in the TIF?
Oh, that wasn't supposed to be there.
I'm assuming it did go to the general fund.
It did.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Tricia? Any old business? Uh, new business, there are two items, uh, at the last economic development meeting, the, um, board approved a fifteen-hundred-dollar grant application to Bill and Judy Cavastini to help out with the, um, for the downstairs, some HVAC improvements that needed made. These improvements are gonna need made before the co-op is able to be open. Bill was at the meeting, the, the community donation and the co-op, and, um, and Bill and Judy themselves are gonna, it's kinda, kinda gonna be a three-part thing. So, uh, from the business district fund, I would like to appropriate fifteen hundred dollars on that grant approval.
Of the total cost, is this?
It's like nine, what was it, ninety, ninety-one hundred?
Yes.
Yes, I believe it was ninety-one hundred.
They're putting a whole new, a whole new heater system in.
Right. Cuz it was fifteen hundred from the business district fund, and fifteen hundred from the donation fund, is that?
Yes.
Or maybe you already stated that.
I think so, yeah, from the community donations, and then three thousand from the co-op, you know, they're gonna put their own money in, and then Bill and Judy will pay for three thousand of it as well.
I'll make a motion to approve of the fifteen hundred dollars for the Cavastini grant.
I'll second.
You'll second? Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Emmerich.
Yes.
Max Emmerich.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Smack.
Yes.
Motion passes. Along with the Economic Development Board, there are two vacant seats, Sean Tyson and Renee, and Renee Martin have stepped down after their two-year appointment, they did an excellent job, uh, we thank them for their service. With the two seats that are open, I've spoken with Hillary Cherry, she has served on the board before and did an absolute wonderful job. I would like to reappoint her to a year term, and, uh, also Aaron Weiss showed some interest, I reached, I reached out to her, I thought she would do a great job. For those of you that don't know Aaron, she, her and her husband John own MB Mechanical, formerly Bassetts, uh, they live down there pretty close to Vine Street, kinda, what's that, Jasper, I believe, and, uh, they've been in this community a long time, I think Aaron would bring a great business sense to the board, and so, uh, with the council's approval, I would like to approve, uh, appoint those two people to the Economic Development and Planning Board. I make a motion to approve the appointment. Second. Rule call, please.
Um, Emmerich.
Yes.
Max Emmerich.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Smack.
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there any other business? On, just, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Two things, one, can I talk to Jordan about this, I got subpoenaed to go to court tomorrow at two-thirty, and it's from, um, the, uh.
It been gas, that's a nice question.
We've been, the city's been involved in, he's done a lot of work with Tony, and why I got subpoenaed as the city building inspector, I don't know, but.
Oh, okay.
Show up there tomorrow, and I talked with Jordan, he kinda gave me fingers on what to say or not say, so, I'll do that. And number two, um, I've been all day in Springfield, talking with the doctor, and next Monday, I'm scheduled for at least triple bypass surgery, maybe quadruple, maybe double, I don't know, but they said I'll be in the hospital five, seven days. This is something that's, you know, not near as serious as big as it used to be, unless you're on this end of it, then.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot out of you.
Yeah.
I mean, you'll be out more than five to seven.
Well, I know that, I'm not talking about in the hospital, but.
Right.
I still plan on trying, I can't drive for a month, so my wife's gonna have to share with me.
Well, don't overexert yourself.
All right, but there's, there's a lot of stuff going on, and, you know, I, I still can, still, I think I can still work on some of that, if it gets a little too much, I'll let somebody know, but.
Use caution.
Hang out at the house and FaceTime, don't have to make.
But I've been down a lot, and as soon as they figure out what it is, and so, maybe I can get some of my energy back, that's what's happening.
Any other, any other business? The public, public comments on the nine agenda items. Any need for executive session? Okay, it's, it's not on the agenda, but there should be a motion to, there should be an adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, we're meeting adjourned.
So, if we can't make a motion on something that's not on the agenda, we can't stop the meeting until we.